Okay, any other questions for Mr. Duke before Ms. Butler comes back up? Thank you, Joel. Okay, Ms. Butler, if you don't mind coming back up just to give the commissioners an opportunity to ask you any questions?
Sure.
That they may have, if there are any questions for Ms. Butler.
Just make them easy questions.
Yes, I'm Ms. Butler, I have a question.
Yes.
The, these sections of the picket fence come in a certain length, probably six foot, eight foot.
Eight feet. Yes, sir, and four feet high.
And I noticed that your neighbor's there, he has the neural posts between each section, which looks nice, and you're gonna do the same thing.
Yes, sir, and our posts will be in cement.
Mm-hmm. And then the sections, of course, you would raise up off the ground so they don't get the water. Sounds good, thank you.
Okay, you can have a seat. We do have Mr. and Ms. Garner Clark, Reverend and Ms. Riz, Garner Clark, would you like to speak for or against, you're spectating and you're welcome to come up.
For or against.
Mm-hmm, against what they are asking to do. You've got to sign in, though, we've gotta have your John Henry first, Garner.
No, I came to, we always like to support our city and support the preservation society, but also our neighbors had said there's, there'd be discussion about driveways and fences and handrails or, you know, something like, I thought, well, I might be in violation myself. So I need to come down here and if there's some rule or I might pick up on something, y'all come back and say, you gotta change the fence, dig up your driveway, you know, so I was more curious than anything, but.
I think you grandfathered in.
You think I'm grandfathered, no, probably, you and I knew Daniel Pratt, we went to school with him, didn't we? Yeah. No, we, we supported from what I heard tonight, I think, I think that would be an improvement to the, to the House, as far as I'm concerned. I think my wife, we don't have any objection to what they're trying to do.
All right, thank you, Garner, thank you for coming. Okay, if there are no further questions, is there a motion to be made regarding this petition and this request?
I move we grant a certificate of appropriateness to Ms. Butler for the House at 216 First Street as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and it is approved, so, there you go. Thank you so much for coming, and thank you for all your hard work to improve our downtown area, specifically First Street.
And your neighborhood.
Ma'am?
To restore an old house that was not necessarily historical. But, they've been our neighbor, she has been our neighbor for about four years now.
Oh, God, it has been that long, hasn't it?
Yeah. And I'm just glad they're there, but they've not been in this particular house, they've been able to buy a house on our street and retain what they're getting except improving it.
And I remember when Mr. Glover lived there, Mayor Glover and Ruth, and then later Charlie and Ruth, and so, it's a historical house as far as I'm concerned. I, I wanted it to be preserved and taken well care of. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Have a good fourth.
Okay, Mr. Duke, would you like to offer us any advice on, on what we need to do regarding Mr. Sanderson and his request?
Yes, it appears that with the change in time and the special meeting that somehow we've gotten wires crossed with this applicant. And Mr. Derry Edwards is the primary, one of the, Sanderson is the owner of the building, Mr. Edwards is the gentleman doing most of the renovations for the proposed use of the, the, of the building for a, well, for a, for a bar is what they're proposing there. So they're proposing some changes, they have received a building permit for, for interior changes, and as they've gone along, they've seen that they need to make some exterior changes as well. So if, if it's okay, I'll be glad to represent, based on what I understand, if there are questions that, that may create some delay, but I, having looked at their application, having talked with them about some of the changes they're, they're proposing, I think we can, can fairly represent it. And if it's okay with the board, we'll, we'll do that, based on the circumstances of y'all having to.
Okay, are there any objections to this? I have one question, Mr. Duke, has this, has the bar request been approved by City Council yet? Has it gone that far?
It, it really, it has not, I don't think, for a, for a liquor license.
Mm-hmm.
And I apologize, I don't know specifically, but what we're really looking at are, are changes to the exterior of the building that really would not, the use of the building really are not what's driving the, the quality or the style of these.
Right, I was just curious, because in the past, we have tabled something until another commission has approved it, so I was just curious.
In, in this case, they already have a building permit, a proper, proper building permit for the interior changes, and I believe they're headed in that direction.
Okay. I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, not, not a problem. Again, this is, the address that's been assigned to this structure is 121 West Main Street. Just for reference purposes, this is the rear of 119 West Main Street. West Main Street is the, the building with the storefront, glass storefront, that is now crossfit, right here next door to us. It is a, the, the, the whole building is really considered a non-contributing structure, it was built about 1960. You have a front, front of the, the structure is a storefront, cinder block with a glazed aluminum storefront. The back of the building, which is the, the portion we're really discussing, is a, a cinder block building with a flat roof. I, I haven't been in Praval long enough to tell you the exact uses of that, of that building, most of the time I've been here, it's been used as storage. So you have some pictures in the staff report that show which portion of the building we're talking about. The, the proposal presented by the applicant is to take the two doors, which exist currently on the west face of the building, to replace one of those with a solid metal door, the other with a, a metal door with, with inset panels. This, the second item is to replace existing metal frame window and deteriorated wood casing on the south wall. The existing window is, is covered by burglar bars at the moment, and I believe, and those are intended to be removed. The window casing will be similar to the doors on the, the west wall, and they're requesting to add solid shutters with, on each side of that window with two inset panels, okay? The, instead of louvered shutters, they would just be solid panels with a couple of inset, excuse me, solid shutters with inset panels, one, one over the other. Okay? And I think there's an example in the, in the details. The, the third item is to add a, a new doorway on the south wall of the building, there's, there's, right now, it's just a, a blank wall, except for the one window. They're requesting to add a, a French door, or French doors on the, what would basically be the, the south, the east side of that wall. And then the fourth item that they are, put in, that they put in their application was to replace a cinder block wall on the, on the east side of the building, or a portion thereof, with a, with a wood frame wall. That request has since been withdrawn. So, we're really only dealing with the three items, the, the block wall replacement, may make sure, if I clear the, the, the wall will be replaced because it's been damaged, and they're gonna have to come back in and repair that, but instead of coming back with a framed wall and, and siding, they're gonna come back with cinder block. So, we would consider that maintenance under your guidelines, and, and that doesn't need your approval, so.
And that's the wall facing the head.
Actually, it's the wall facing the police department.
Right, right. If there is a walkway.
There is a walkway beside it, yes, ma'am. There, there's been some deterioration of the foundation, which has caused the wall to apparently sag, and they have not gotten this approval to replace that from the, from the building official yet, they'll have to get that, but it is their intention to come back with block, so, we would just remove that from their request. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions, I'm sorry, I went through that pretty quick, and.
Go ahead.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we remove item four from the request for certificate of appropriateness.
Again, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and request number four has been removed. All right, are there any questions for Mr. Duke in regards to this request?
I was just gonna ask about the shutters, you got a question about those in the report?
Yes, sir, I'm just gonna, gonna, in the report, I, I mentioned that your guidelines talk about not adding features to buildings that really have not been present or would not be in keeping with the style of the building, and the, the shutters beside these windows are, would be really an, an addition to this building that it's really never had. This is a very, I mean, we, we talk about simple construction, this is a very utilitarian portion of this building. It, it, it's certainly fine for what they're trying to convert it to, but from an external appearance, it would seem to be adding something to the building that it hasn't had. I, I think if you're looking for some kind of ornamentation of the building, a sign added there, advertising the, the use of the building, probably would, would do just about as much as what they're trying to do with shutters, you know, it's. No, and, well, signage will allow that to be a, a staff level approval if, if it meets your guidelines, and so, it, it probably is coming, and I would expect they would have signage on both the east wall, excuse me, the west wall and the south wall.
But, the south wall.
Yes, ma'am. So I, I would say that the shutters are probably adding to this building something that is, that is, is not had in the past, and, but again, this is a non-contributing structure, it is not out of the question to add them, it's just, that was my comment. Mr. Bryce, I think that's what you're asking about is.
I was just wondering if we ought to consider what, what you recommended without the inset panels on the, if, if we approve the shutters. I was just reading the report, it, it just said it might be.
They're a little more competitive than, than real shutters.
Right. And, and, I'm sorry, to, to echo what Bryce was saying, I, what I said in my report is that, you know, shutters have not been present, but if you're gonna allow the shutters, then just maybe just simple boards, that, with no, no inset panels or anything, just something, if you, if you wanna have something that frames the window, just some simple, very simple shutters would be maybe more appropriate.
That would be the main, that's how it would be the main interest, yes, it's.
That's what they intend, yes, ma'am. The, the other doors are necess, are, first of all, already there, and secondly, they're there for the assembly occupancy, yes, ma'am.
Joel.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to discuss the shutters.
Okay.
Those are just gonna be tacked-on fixed shutters.
That would be the case.
And we are coming, we are the historical committee, there's nothing historical about tacked-on shutters.
Yes, ma'am.
And I wonder if we open up a can of worms for the future, people are gonna start tacking on shutters beside windows.
I'm not gonna disagree with you, Mr. Smith.
I'm just bringing that up for thought to, to me.
Well, it, it, it appears, if we looked at what they're mainly asking for, that the areas from a staff perspective that are of concern, most concern was the wall they were proposing, but again, that's been removed. The shutters are of some concern, the, the main thing is that the, the openings, the new openings for the French doors and the new installation of the window basically be cased the same as, as the existing openings on the, on the west wall, and that would be some consistency on this building, just to make sure that.
But that is presented in their request, right?
Basically, yes.
Yeah, okay.
The facing on the, the doorways, it's just, boards butted up against each other, it's a very simple way to do it, and, and it's very appropriate for this building.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So the, the other, this, let me pull this picture out. These are the doors that, that are present now, y'all can see that. The doors, they, they're proposing two different doors, and they're both solid, neither one of them have glass. One is a, a very much a security door, like you'd see.
Door number one.
Well, the, the best way I know to describe that is the, the one-way door that fronts out on the, to Main Street from the Bank of Praval, excuse me, the old Bank of Praval building. There's a, right there by Uncle Mick's, there's a stairway door that comes out, it was required by code, I'm sure, but it doesn't have any way to get back in, and I, I think that's what they intend here. My only comment would be is to, to pick, pick one door or the other, and make them both the same.
I think so, too.
Other than that, they, they don't seem to want a, a lot of windows in this building, and it doesn't have them now, so, they're not really.
Pretty perfect.
Any changes, so. Those, those are our areas of where we're making comments. Overall, I think what they propose is certainly acceptable. Like Larry said, you don't wanna necessarily add to buildings that haven't really had these features in the past.
What, what, over on the, in this picture, it's got, what's that top thing over the shutters, over the windows, was they gonna do that, too?
No, that was, and this is what we've run into a few times with folks, and I had to call for clarification on that, it's really just trying to show the window itself, yeah, and, and the shutters.
Okay.
You know, we, a lot of, a lot of these applications, folks are trying to show you what they wanna do without having to go to the trouble of getting an architect to, to draw specifically what they want, and so, the internet's great for that, unless you got a bunch of roof colors, like y'all run into, but, this is really just showing the, the shutters, and the window is shown on a different page, I believe. It, I believe it would be a vast improvement just getting the, the burglar bars off the window, this, six over six is what they're proposing for the window, pretty much.
Also.
With the burglar bars.
Larry, I think if, if it would help you to feel a little bit better about the shutters, you know, in that alleyway on the other side, I believe, is shutters going up and down, fake windows, like there's not even anything there, exactly.
Right.
So shutters, yes. The windows fake and the shutters are fake, so if that helps you to kind of balance this out a little bit.
Well, and again, y'all need to keep in mind that there have been some things done to buildings well before y'all started looking at them with a, with a design eye.
Right.
And so, yeah, yeah, again, this is the, this is the face of the building that's gonna change the most, it's gonna, you're gonna add the window, then you're gonna case it, which is gonna add some features to that, and then you're gonna add the French doors here, and then you're gonna put a casing around the doors, so, which will have to open out to meet code. I, I think that's in keeping with the style of the building, again, if you, ornamentation would be to add signage possibly on the corner or between the window and the door, will certainly help the building in appearance. We're gonna see more and more of this, people using space that's not been used in the past. If you've got vacant space downtown, you might not have it long, so.
Are there any other questions, sorry, are there any other questions for Mr. Duke? All right, is there a motion to be made at this time?
Before a motion, can we perhaps incorporate in that motion that these doors be set up?
Absolutely.
Come out, compose a motion, yeah. Certainly, they. That's so terrible. No, I see.
Talking about the shutters and the door.
Anyone have a motion to be made? Formulating a motion.
They'll be formulated.
Okay.
Let's see, where's that word? I, what's what I, uh, request that we approve a certificate of appropriateness as presented, except that the two west-side doors match.
And if they be the panel?
Yes, be, that the two west-side doors match and be panel doors.
Yes.
As, as door number two presented.
Did you wanna?
Any?
What about the shutters? What about the shutters, Larry?
I'm just gonna look at them.
All right, all in favor, say, yes, Mr. Duke.
Okay, who was the second?
Sorry, I thought it was great.
Okay, and so, and just so I make sure, this motion covers?
Everything within, with.
Except for the doors.
Got it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chair votes aye, and it has been approved. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
I have one item before you do that.
Oh, sorry, Joel.
I was gonna ask about that meet, that, uh, meeting in Mobile.
Yes, sir.
I left my, 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 it's in my calendar, I didn't know what, what was going on on that, if, if still going, I mean.
Yes, sir, it is, in fact, I intended to get something to you by email, but time got away from me, I, you would get it in the, in your email today, the, the National Alliance of Preservation Commissions, which is the National Association, which we have, we keep y'all a member of each year by paying dues, but it is the National Organization for Preservation Commissions. They have a, what they call a forum every two years, I believe, I can't remember where the last one was, I think, I wanna say it was in Detroit.
Maybe Detroit?
Really?
Six years?
No, there, there is the Alabama, the Alabama Preservation, um.
Oh, one of the same, uh, this is the session.
Yeah, Alabama Preservation, uh, Association or Alliance that meets annually, but this was the national group, and they're meeting in Mobile the last week in July, and, let me see if I can get the exact dates, we've mentioned it before, as the, it is the 27th, they have a preliminary program starting on Wednesday, the 27th, but really, the real program picks up on Thursday, the 28th, and runs through Saturday, the, well, runs through the 31st on Sunday. Certainly, you don't have to go to all of it, and what I'll be sending out to you is a, a copy of the agenda or a link to it online. The city sets aside, in, in the planning department budget money for training for, and, and travel for, for boards each year. I rarely get anybody to take advantage of it. If you are interested in going down, even just partially for a couple of days, or even a day, if you let me know, we will take care of getting you registered, we'll get you a hotel room, and that'll all be taken care of on the city's, city's dime. I'm, I'm gonna try to go down for a couple of, a couple of days myself, but we are happy to, to take care of that for you. I think it would be interesting for you to see what other commissions are running up against. A lot of them are much, are very active, some of them are, are not very active at all. Mobile's a good place, they've been doing preservation commissions for a long time, so they, a, a lot of the programs are oriented on Mobile, so. But when you, when you take a look at it, just let me know, in, in all seriousness, you should take advantage of it.
One of these programs listed on there, an itinerary of different programs.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And I, and I believe.
Has anybody here been before, and was it worth it?
I've got one of those brochures that you gave us.
The, the National Forum, I don't think has been this close in the past as far as travel. For, for your benefit, a lot of the courses, I think you get AIA credit if you need it, so, be worth it.
I'm gonna be in the brochure as that we can, so I may.
Yeah, just, just come on up, yeah, so, we'll get that for you. I have the benefit of the fact that I'm here near at the end, end of the fiscal year, and the Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, none of them have taken advantage of this training money, so I can dip into theirs as well, so.
I think that would be good PR for us, too, you know, if we, if we had something like that.
Just a few folks, yeah, that would be fine.
Let us know what days you're going, which days you think would be the most.
Yeah, I think Friday and Saturday are the days where they have the, the most program.
Okay.
And I think there's a, like, an opening reception on, on Thursday, but I, I'll get that to y'all, here.
Joel, can I, can I mention one thing? Do I have to have this on?
If you're still in session, yes, ma'am.
Okay, we are still in session, I guess.
And, and we can, we can close, and you can ask.
Oh, that would be good, yeah.
But I do need to mention something to you while you're in session.
Okay.
Mr. Sayer, who is, I apologize, 218 Chestnut, South Chestnut Street, got approval for a, a metal roof on his house, or on his, on the house there, on the corner, he has asked if he could extend that approval to, to the accessory structure that's at the rear of the, of the, the lot, and he wanted to know whether he could get that, basically by just kind of getting me to approve it, and I said I needed to run that by y'all to make sure that there would be no objection. From a staff perspective, we have no objection, and if you're, if you're not familiar enough with it, I don't, you don't have to vote, you don't have to agree, but I thought I would just bring that up to you, is what he's requesting.
Question about that, regarding the structure, is it a residence, or is it?
Well, it is own business, but it has been a continuously, a, continuously a residence, as far as I can tell, so it, it is essentially what we call a legal non-conforming use, it's allowed to continue as a residence, even though their business operation, the property, that's been going on since before I got here, so I, I can't tell you.
It's all a juvenile, it's a business, so.
Yes, ma'am. But that, we have a few of those around. But that, we have a few of those around town.
Do we need to do anything formal with that?
Yes, and if you would, if you would like to assemble.
Is it called, because they're still there working on that, it's taken them a long time to do that roof?
They have taken a while, yes.
But they're still there, is that why he's wanting to?
Yes, I'm trying to find where y'all approved that, hang on just a second.
What's on the roof of the shed down?
It's a shingle.
And that's on, and they putting a new roof on the house?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I really, unless I know more about it, I don't have a problem, as long as they use the same color and the same type.
Yes, sir, that's, that's the, that's the intention.
Is that a motion, Mr. Smith?
He's specific.
Is that a motion?
Is that a motion, Mr. Smith? Okay, there's a motion to be made? Is there a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, and we have approved the extension of the metal roofing.
Same metal roof.
Same color, same type, to the shed or accessory structure with the Sayers. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I salute.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.